Alright. My name is Mark Jones.
We've done here, we talked about what funds were and on this sheet.
You were talking about utilities?
Yes.
Good, okay.
That's where we're at. I didn't expect what four funds were.
Alright, well, we will jump into this next piece because this is where we definitely will need some guidance as we go forward. As you guys know, just in general, the Board of Education for us has set a couple of goals. In the past, we have wanted to have a fund balance that was at or above 20%. It was one of the goals. The other goal is we wanted to maintain a $3 million balance in our Fund 4. And then also, we wanted our Fund 1 to have the ability to transfer $2 million over into 4. So those are things and guidelines that we have continued to operate under, those goals. It was, we wanted to have a fund balance, what you already mentioned, above, at 20% or above 20%. The other, you know, it's a Fund 4 of $3 million, the capital fund, and then a transfer from Fund 1 to Fund 4 of $2 million.
And that's the goal, we do that every year.
Every year. Yeah. And so, as we work through that, now, of course, this is some of, as we work, and as you guys worked with Dr. Wilson, next year, you'll be making some adjustments to those, obviously, as we go. But I want to talk a little bit about where we were, and I think if I end up repeating something, I apologize. There was a couple of things that had impacted this budget, or as we go into next year's budget, that I think were unanticipated. There were things that we did anticipate. Did you guys know, when we first started talking, the board members that were here back in 2021, we made a pretty significant changes in the support staff salary scales, and we presented where we were with that. We estimated out where we would be in our fund balances going forward. We knew that the FY '23, '24, '25 years were projected to be down years. Obviously, you don't know exactly how much, but we knew that they were going to be on the tighter side. So we anticipated that. Well, you guys know, for 2021, we did not anticipate having inflation impact us the way that inflation is impacting us now. So that has been, that has had a greater impact on the budget, but you guys are getting ready to see that impact here shortly. Some of those areas, as we just discussed, were utilities. Some of the other things were that impacted this budget. If you go back to the salary spreadsheet above, if we looked at, as you know, we took our teacher base and raised it to 40,000. That was a goal that we wanted to try to get to if we could. We felt like we could do that, but that did have an impact, a significant impact, on these salaries. So if we were to just run our budget forward, it's great that we're looking at 1.148, 1.184 is what I meant to say, as a, that number being on the positive side, but the truth is, there's a couple of things that are impacting that. One was that raise, it was above what we thought. We also were struggling with support staff, and so, we asked the board if we could alter those salary scales. We moved on that relatively quickly because we were struggling so much with custodial and kitchen staff. And I would say that our changes that we made to that has resulted in those positions being close to 100% full all this year, which was a dramatic change. Now, our struggles in transportation still continue to be because those struggles are not just necessarily about money. It's hard to find people that can do split shifts. There's a lot of factors in transportation that are impacting it. But we did have a positive impact on our hiring and custodial boot service. Technology is a struggle, but we have worked through some of those details we feel like this year. Anyway, but as we look last year, those also had an impact. And one thing, for me, I did not anticipate, which is, you know, if I were going to have more years under my belt, I would know, but hadn't experienced this. Because we did experience the 100% largely through the year, those salary lines obviously evaporated, where before, they were unfilled positions, and those dollars were staying in salaries. So it became plus. And so, this number actually should be, as we project through next year, higher than what it is right now, because that's where we did have a lot of our plus. I don't think that's an official banking term. I do like you hear that term. So, getting rid of life's expenses. Yes, there you go. So, I just want to point that out. So as we go down to, this is, and I do like, once again, this does look a little bit different than what we have used in the past. This is one where Dr. Wilson, when you look at the X and Y axis there, we have flipped those, because we used to have the funds listed across the top, the other categories were listed then down the side. And so, we have flipped those. So when you read these, this graph, I think your, this chart, I think it reads better, because to me, it makes more sense as we go through, being able to track what is what. So as we wrap up fiscal year '23, we feel pretty strongly that, once again, looking at the fund balance, looking at where we are financially, we're going to end somewhere in the neighborhood of 26.04%. Is that?
He's looking at me. Oh, I, yes. It's an estimate.
These are estimates. We have not finalized, we don't know, we still got money coming in from the state, so that is happening. So when we talk about, so basically, just to give you an idea, assuming all things being equal, if we received no money from the state, we wouldn't be able to pay all of our bills and do everything that we needed to do for about two and a half months. That's what 26-ish gets us. Now, that's a very general statement, but that just at least gives you a ballpark. It's not quite three months like it has been in the past, because obviously, we've continued to grow. So that is what we're looking at there. So when you take then all of those ending balances, anything else you want to say about FY '23? So as we will continue to close out, so when we show you the budget book, those things will be as final as we can make them in June. So you'll see those final numbers, because we will have received everything, payments would have gone out, and that will be as close as inaccurate as we can make that at that time. So you'll be seeing that in the budget book. So as we then begin the work for FY '24, we now need to start talking about where we're headed. So taking these ending balances, rolling them forward, once again, the goal is to be at the 20% mark, the $2 million transfer, our capital being where we want it to be, all of those things in consideration when we go down to FY '24. So if you go ahead and scroll past the salary benefits, I'm going to come back to that. So if you go, question?
On the last budget preview, you said 630, '23 with the ending fund balance of 22.36 versus two pages up.
Hold on, I screwed up somewhere. Why?
Two pages up, we're 26.
It's actually, it's that mistake that I shouldn't, that we discussed.
I don't remember, so.
So here, I'll show you later. This is not 22.4. We didn't.
Oh, I didn't, yeah, okay, yeah.
We needed to add a line, we didn't add a line. So when you look at the fund balance, it reads 630, '20, '24, 17.75.
Here, this is what you're talking about right here.
Right.
Yeah, it really shouldn't be.
That should be the number, we needed to drop those down.
Yeah, the 26.
Yeah.
Instead of 22, it should be 26. There was a 22 at one point. Does that make sense?
Go against the.
So right below the 17.75, the 22.36 is an old number.
Yeah.
26. It should be 26.
Correct.
This is a PDF, so I can't.
Ultimately, when we get that, that is correct.
Yeah.
I didn't know if that was the number, if we were basing this.
That's a number that you just.
Actually, we're on the left.
It's the number, the formula in the spreadsheet is in the number above that.
Oh, okay.
It's in the box, yeah, it's in the box.
Okay.
So, maybe there's something that I was right now, that's why. What is the context for that goal, the transfer of $2 million every time?
So, we want to maintain a capital balance, so that if you have several units that would go out on roofs, things like that, you wouldn't want to have that money in reserve. And so, right now, the way that we have been budgeting out of capital, between operations, technology, all of the things, Curtis and I, transportation, at one point, part of it was my job, the other part was his job, we worked them together, we give him 1.75 million a year to do those things. So that's his budget to work out in all of those repairs and that kind of thing. So, we want to, right now, we're roughly 5.4 million in that account. We want to try to maintain that for, if we decide to spend 150,000 for a driveway, we know we have dollars to do that. But if he's spending 1.75 every year, if we don't stay on top of that, then that fund's just going to continue to drop. So we want to try to transfer over as much as we can.
And that includes new projects also, rebuilding projects also?
It depends on what you mean by new. I mean, it could be, are you talking?
Charters.
Correct. There would not be enough dollars to do that unless.
They come out of that fund, right?
Yes, but the, yes and no. If you do Fund 3's difference, if you're doing a bond, it goes into 4 and out of 4, as you're paying and doing it, but it gets generated from 3, if you're talking about bond.
Dead service.
Right, dead service, yeah, Fund 3. So, so if we, let's say, for example, we wanted to add, like, one year I added classrooms, and '25, it'd be a whole lot more than that now, but 1,000 apiece, that's a new project we would make that up for.
Yes.
If we wanted to change out compressors at the high school roof, right, those are, what, 75,000 apiece now?
100,000.
Anyway, it would come out of that.
We're building a new elementary school.
It what?
If we were going to build a new elementary school.
That we would run a bond. There would be.
A bond is a 3.
It would generate from 3 and then move into 4, right?
Pay it out.
You pay it out of 4, yes. But you see it going from 3 through 4.
So if you look at seven, the first column on here, capital projects, you see that there's 32 million. Five of that-ish is our local money that we have, the rest of it is bond money. And then that's, that's why you'll see years where it's high, and then it'll go down to a realistic fund. Even though they're in separate checking accounts, they're not connected in any way, when you look at the funds, that's how we have to.
Am I answering your question?
Yes, thank you. I'm just trying to. I give you the question, like, where are the options? Yeah. I'm getting the picture slightly.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, actually. I'm going to talk about that transfer coming up, no, 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 that's the question that needs to be asked. So when we look at FY '24, we do have some options. We are ending, as an example, 12. So, okay, let me back up. At FY '24, we have overestimated expenses, because we don't know exactly where we're going to be. We are looking at our utilities being higher, we know that supplies are going up, so Lori has figured in and calculated in inflation now into these numbers. And we also then have estimated some of our revenues flat, right, rolling into the next year, so we're not anticipating new money. And actually, there is a concern with, they have passed, the tax break at 65, there's a whole lot of problems for us. That is going to actually, I believe, dramatically impact our, what we receive on assessed valuation. We, the school budget is going to be dramatically impacted. The, I don't think we've yet understood exactly, that bill is devastating to us. We don't even know, we won't get into that. But what we do know is that we have estimated those revenue slats, right, going into this. And you added, I think, there was a handful, a couple of accounts that you, we did increase though, right?
Yes. Yeah, our revenue?
Revenue, revenue.
But no, it's not flat, it's not the same value as last.
Correct. So there, we did, we do have some, now, we just got that today, so we have not been, this has not been incorporated in. So what you're seeing here, some of those we did do flat because we didn't.
Right.
So hopefully, will go up. That will change that 17.75 number. So I would say, this number is about 3% to 4% lower than what I wanted it to be, because obviously, our goal is the 20%. I think that when you look at this, and we go through the course of the year with the way that Dr. Wilson is going to be budgeting, this number, there's a good indication that it will go up. However, it's not going to have the swings that we've seen in the past. I just want to tell the board that that will not happen. We are not going to then all of a sudden see a 31% land in the buckets, there's no fluff there. So.
Yes. So you're saying, at the end of '24, the fund balance could be about 17 instead of 5?
We're saying right now that that would be 1.75%. I think there's a good chance you could end at that 18, 19 mark, you're not going to end at a 25 mark. That will not happen.
What is recommended, SE, for fund balance?
They don't come after you until you're in the single digits, right?
7% is when you are.
Stressed.
Stress, they have a word they use, that's 7%.
So, we are, I mean.
I'd be stressed too.
We do conservatively budget, and so, we, you know, need to balance that. Now, I think to Christina's question, how, once, again, I think there is some balances that can be had. So for example, if we wanted to go back to FY '23, right now, we can maximize a Fund 4 transfer. So we can actually take some of that 26% and transfer a larger number over into 4, so that keeps us ahead of the work that Curtis is needing to do in operations, but then in our '24 budget, we cannot do as much of a transfer to keep some of that in our Fund 1 budget, which then changes that 17% number. As an example, I'm not saying that we have to do that, I'm saying that that could be there. The other caveat is, if we go one slide up, this is, includes the increase to healthcare, which we already know, and that's already in the budget of 434,000. And this does also include, it would be our recommendation, and what we would like to bring to MSTA, if the board in general is, yes, we can be supportive of this, not asking for a vote, just saying, are we headed in the right direction that you want us to head? A step, so in other words, when everybody's salary scheduled, if you're on step 4, we're taking you to 5. If you then got college hours, we're going to then move you over to the right. So that, basically, you got a raise going down, and you got a raise going over. That's what we mean by a step. And then if we then add $300 to the base, then that, everybody, basically, if you're on the salary scale, you just got a $300 raise. That's what that means. And so, when people, most educators, if you talk to them, they, they know they got the step, but they don't always think of the step being a raise, but it is. I mean, if we didn't have 300 to the base, and we just moved you a step, as you can see, it's almost double the cost of adding to the base. So everybody gets a raise when you give a step. Now, because we did change the support staff scales, they now, because we had some that they didn't get a raise unless we added to the teacher base. Now we've changed that. So if we give a step, they still get a raise, right? But it's a percentage of the steps.
It's not really a raise, though. They have movement up to their years of experience that they.
Yes, but they make more money next year than they did this year, that's a raise. There's people who are frozen.
Yeah.
I did work for the same money next year I did this year.
Okay.
I mean, it, no, it's just a difference. But, yeah. It's not like.
Christina, you're a teacher, you're a teacher, and many of us as teachers, when you go into the teaching profession, it's assumed, and so it doesn't feel like a raise. It's assumed I get my step, it doesn't.
It's the same salary schedules before, we didn't add to what it was to make it a raise, we just stayed with the same salary schedule. You're right, they need more money, that's.
Right. That's all I'm just simply saying, they just made more money. Now, we, the way we have our salary scale set up, we like to also add money to that base, because that does add more to the teacher scale, as well as that's how the rest of our staff get an additional raise as well.
I think it's on every step.
Correct. Yes. Yeah, and many of our support staff scales do not have the ability to move right, because they don't have education requirements that they can do, like teachers can get their masters, they can get a specialist or a doctorate. Our custodians don't have that. We've tried to build some of that in, but they don't have the ability to move horizontally on a scale, they can only move vertically. So that is also why we like to add to that base as well, trying to remain competitive. So, I, it would not be my recommendation at this time to go above 300. I think we can afford the 300, I think that is a good conservative move, given everybody the step and the 300 with the increase to healthcare as well. You know, you're looking at 1.3, 1.4 million, we want to try to keep that number below 2. We will, and an add, 2 million and an add, let me finish my statement there, staying in my head. And we are going to have to add some new positions. We are keeping those at an extreme minimum and prioritizing those processes as we go, so we'll be bringing some of those to you in June, but we are wanting to kind of get a sense of where we are here before we move forward there. There will, obviously, anytime you open a building, like the Innovation Center, early childhood, which we knew it was coming, we planned for it, but it has a budgetary impact when you open those buildings. So I feel comfortable, the 17.75 does include the numbers I'm showing you here. They show the health increase, they show the step, and they show the $300 as well. And this is support staff and certified, this is all salaries, where before, we would have just been showing you the certified impact and estimating the support staff. This is more accurate dollars that you're seeing right here now, the best that we can determine.
So the step increase, does that mean it'll be 40,300 at the base?
The base will be 40,300.
Yeah, but she said it was going to add 300 to it. So, the staff, you're saying the 764,000 on the step, those are already people who are looking at that expecting to go forward, right?
They, that is an expectation.
So those people, that's, they're expecting that. You're saying the 300 is going to be an addition, like, so everybody, everybody's getting 14 cents more, that would, that would be?
Yes.
So that's, that's everybody, that's the same.
Well, to answer, you had two questions there. The first question, to me, no. My salary, Lori's salary, they're negotiated directly with the board. Her salary is the only one that's, yeah. So from the assistant superintendent's down, everybody is tied to the teacher base, everybody. Assistant superintendent down, so when you add to the teacher base the $300, Craig gets a raise. If you don't add $300 to that, he only gets a raise in the step. Yes.
So that 5%age then?
Can be. So roughly, this is going to be with the $300 and the step, it's going to roughly be in the neighborhood of, depending on where you fall on that scale, because obviously, the less money you earn, the percentage, you know, percentages work, it can be anywhere between 1.8 and 2.5% increase is what we would be looking at.
For the steps.
And the 300.
And the 300, that's the one.
So most of our steps, so if you look at our salary scale, it's, to go down the scale, they start at like $600 or 650, and then they go to 725.
So all of those are going to.
Everybody gets 300, and then you get your step. So if I go down, and if I'm at year, say, 11, 12, I get a $750 increase there, and I get the 300, so I got 1,050.
I have some step increase, I'm not just getting the other.
You're at least getting 300.
Got it.
So for example, that person would be a new hire. I'm a first-year teacher, I'm right out of the box, if you start this year, you'd get 40,000. By starting next year, you get 40,300. And no step, because you're on step 4.
Right, right. And you're saying that you don't think they see steps as a raise?
Oh, no, I was just.
It's an expectation, it's an expectation.
It's not like we took the whole salary schedule and gave them a raise, it's like, add the 300, in my mind, is a raise. But just moving up the steps, I don't think they would count that.
And the way you described it is the way 98, 97% of educators believe.
Maybe 90.
If I be.
But a step is 600, a step is $600.
Or so.
Of course, of the year, so that's, you know.
If I'm a, if I'm a, if I've been in education 28 years, it's a thousand dollars.
Well, most of the year.
Right.
Some are 650, and so, also, of course, of the year, that's, I mean, that's not very much of a month, so I don't know.
Your electric, your electric may have gone up.
No, this, I'll tell you right now, we are, and this is why I wanted to visit with the board, what we are presenting here, this is not about keeping pace with inflation. This is not about, and I'll tell you right now, this is not about being competitive either. We are going to be outpaced. We will, in the COC, our salary base is going to drop down to number 8, 9, I don't think we'll be 10, but we're going to be 7, 8, 9. We are going to be towards the lower end. I have heard rumors, Branson is going to 42,000.
I didn't say that a long ago. We're open session, we're open session.
I have heard rumors.
Okay.
We don't know, we don't know.
What can we do anymore?
So, once again, I will say that the goal that we work around is we try to keep that number as close to 20 as we can keep it. We transfer 2 million, we want to keep that, but I'm just telling you, Amber, to answer your question, these are, this is why we're presenting this budget to you. If you think in terms of $300, so basically, $100 costs you 100,000. Let's just say, right, you don't get a 300, 280, call it 300, right? So 100 adds 100,000 to it, every 100,000 that you add is going to take that 0.75, and it's going to drop it to about 0.3, as a guess, right? So every 100 that you add, you're going to drop 0.2 to 0.3 on your percent. So.
But so can we find it in some other fund then? Yeah, didn't interrupt. Can we maybe find it in some other funds, so we don't have to drop, can we transfer back to 4?
No, because at this point, the number that you're talking about, you have to add new money to change that. All the money's in there, so it doesn't matter what you're moving or what you're doing. So for example, if we, let me, I'm not answering your question right, let me back up. To answer your question, yes, but we have to find new money, it can't be existing money. The way you would find new money if you chose to do that is you would not do the 2 million transfer to 4, you have to leave it in 1, because the 17 is generated out of Fund 1. Does that make sense? So we have to leave more in 1 in order for that number to be higher, so we can go to 4. But if you've got Curtis, who has to buy computers, he had, he's, we're putting a roof on East, he's spending that 1.75. So are we okay with that Fund 4 dropping? That's the scale. In order for us to come back, I would, I would, I'll kick this to Lori. I would, if the board, please don't consider more than 500 to the base, I think we're going to, we would struggle.
But then you have to think about this. Do it now, and it gets worse with budget money coming in from the state, because they keep cutting taxes on certain things.
Yes, I'm telling.
And even this tax with the seniors on property taxes, that's, sorry. But you start doing that, your money coming in is not going to be as much, but you raise, keep raising the salaries of the teacher, how do you balance all that in the next two or three years?
I haven't fully understood this, but I'm telling, here's the problem with that. I would say, there is some concerns with, even with the 65 people at 65, you're at least going to collect what you're collecting now, that's going to be flat. Here's the problem with what they did. They said, they're still going to assess their property, that one piece of property, at that break, so they're going to hold them here, but they're going to allow their property still to continue, which means we now end up in a rollback situation, so then we don't get to take, when, when, when there's an increase in assessed valuation, we do get more money. What the state says under Hancock, you can't have a windfall. So now we don't even get the gap that we used to get.
Right, and that's what Lori was saying a while.
So they just crippled us.
We're looking at a rollback, you know, that's when we do the tax.
So my concern is, we potentially could have a budget that collapses, and we didn't even know it was coming.
So we don't want a rollback, that's what it is. I mean, like, that's not even close.
We don't have a choice.
And we may need those.
I thought this is the reserve that's too much.
No, it's not a reserve, no.
No, now, what we would be able to do, Christina, let me explain. What we would be able to do is if we say we have to roll back 10 cents. We still have, because we have managed well, we still, we don't have to lower the 14.4. But we can still slide it to 3, which of course is obviously what I would recommend, right? And because then, at least then you're, you're putting more on debt, right? No, I mean, it accumulates, you don't make the pay, but you know what I'm saying? It, it can go there. The problem that you have is, you don't ever, you don't get that new money gap. Because even, because the Hancock says, you can't get a windfall because the property is worth more. So you still, you would have, so you were here. They, with, with the increase, you should have been here. But they say, no, you've got to roll back this much, so we should have gotten this. But now we don't even get that, because now we're back to here. Because 65 people are only going to pay this amount. But we still get hit with this.
Right, the 65 people, their property shouldn't even be in that factor.
Right, but they, they left it.
Right, it should not be in that factor, but.
But it doesn't go into.
It's done, it's, it's ordered together.
Right, but it doesn't go into effect from January the 1st, 2024.
Yes, but, but. To that, once again. Yes, but.
You have to look forward when you're doing that.
This year, you could end up in a rollback situation, because we have had, we got to assess that. The other problem that you have is, because we're talking about a salary increase, they wouldn't be paid the same amount at least next year when they got paid this year. So that number carries higher next year.
Yep, well, we're going to increase the same amount each year, right?
We do, how are you saying? It's a cumulative effect.
Once you, once you range that it's.
You'd have to take that back. You'd have to.
Right. Or, I mean, my recommendation would be attrition. We don't replace people who leave, which means our goal is to have first grade classes at 22. Your first grade classes are no longer at 22, they're at 28. You can't bring in new staff.
Are they only salary people? Are there other salary?
No, we're talking about everybody. This number is everybody.
Yeah, so there are other things besides just teachers, right? I mean, not everybody.
Well, I mean, it's, it's.
Like, you know. I mean, if you're talking about not replacing people who leave, you're not just talking about not replacing teachers. You're talking about not replacing other staff too.
Well, saying what you're saying, you're not saying, I mean, what are you, I mean, any staff? Yes, of course, you did not add custodians, you did not add administrators, you did not add, sure. I mean, our administrators, our administrators ratios right now are well above the stack. We actually should be adding administrators to the book. So our classrooms actually are significantly below what is recommended. Our administrator scales are, especially at our high school, are significantly above those numbers. Our counselors are significantly above those numbers. So we, there's not room to cut there, to my point. Because we have, you know, at, at our high school, we're 1 to 400 administrator, 1 administrator to 400 students. The ratio should be under 300 for administrators. Right, we take you. They're not requirements, they're recommendations. But that's where for us, we say in the classroom, we want to have our classroom. So when we strategically plan with our community, we said, where do you want our classroom set? So kindergarten, we want at the, at the 20 mark, I think, 21. First grade is like 22, third grade, so on, right? And so we want to manage, because we feel like that gives us the best instruction. We never went to our community and said, well, what do you want your administrator ratio to be? Right, I mean, we have 900 students at our middle school. You've got 3 administrators in it, so that's 1 and a little over 300. Your high school has over 1,800, and we only have 5.
Five, yeah.
5, technically 6, because of the way we pay. So those numbers are significantly, so I'm saying, can you answer your question? Yes, we, we sit here and decide who gets cut.
So I guess my mind just went to that fusion, says, so the cost of staffs are going to grow. And I said, well, I don't think that's the only, the only option. There'll be others, there could be others.
But also, keep in mind, if you have almost 500 teachers, you have 60 administrators. Where's the most likely that group going to come from? Our attrition, because I said we're going to use attrition. The attrition generally comes from the teaching scale. I mean, I was just, speaking in general terms of that, I wasn't being specific.
But honestly.
Just teachers, but that's likely going to be cut, yes.
But honestly, a teacher's salary is a fraction of an administrator's salary.
And to your point, the other thing that you probably, to answer your question, it would be, is we would start when we, we know that those interventionists have provided an amazing service and have benefited our kids greatly, that there's 8 teachers you can put back in the classroom. So now they're no longer interventionists, they're back in the classroom. We have instructional coaches. They do amazing things. They are making our district better, absolutely. In tight times, you can put them back in the classroom. Those are the decisions you're going to have to make.
Then you look at our vision and our mission, you're taking away, it should be about our students.
Yeah.
If you take those away, our students don't suffer.
Yeah, I think the teachers, it seems those are the last, I don't think the last place for looking at it. Like, can we take away something else? I'm coming by through a garbage truck. I know that's silly, but, you know.
Unfortunately, it's just a fraction of the cost though.
Even, even if we pass, even if we pass.
When you're dealing with family budget, you try to cut from everything you can, and the most important thing you cut from it last. You try to cut from it.
Correct.
The other thing, I mean.
Yeah, when your, when your salaries are 80%, the only way to make significant cuts, I mean, we're talking, we held all of our, this year, we held all of our supplies back 10%. We only funded it 90% this year, you know what that gained is? $200,000.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about if our school district, like at your house.
Yeah, you know, but I'm talking about, I mean. Logistically, that, I mean, but my point to what you were saying, no, is, we took all of our supply lines. When Lori put that up there, it was only $200,000. And that was a 10% cut. I mean, you think it turns into a cut, that's a significant cut, right? And it only gained us $200,000.
And we don't know what inflation's going to do this year and next year.
So, I mean, talking about big budgets, like business budgets, obviously, we don't have a sales, you know, to increase revenue. But the only way you increase profitability, our bottom line is increase sales and decrease profit. Decrease cost, increase sales. But if you increase at 10%, you can cut cost 10%. But if you increase sales 1% or increase revenue or it 1%, it's that same 10%. So.
That's a great point.
It's a, it, when you start cutting budgets, you, you start dissecting the way salaries are for the school district. It's, it's crazy how ahead of that is, and it's not a good conversation. I'm not, we're, we're in the people business. But, and, and to this, to this point, and where it puts us in a hard place, just coming from a real estate background and management of our assets, that's the other, to me, we're talking about the 2 biggest things. We've got our people, our teachers' kids have impacts. And in order we put more money in our maintenance side and our, and our assets and our property, which, and those are really the only 2 places that we could cut and make anything significant. But then we, you know, do the maintenance, we say, oh, let's not do the roof on East, that gives us, you know, whatever. But, you know, obviously, that's not what we recommend. That'd be the big, that would be the big thing, but, you know, which one do you prioritize at that point?
Well, so, so that's very prioritized. Maintenance is essential, teachers are essential, I mean, what things, what things make the most that can be, that cost the most, like you're talking about, that make the most expense, that can be trimmed or frozen. I mean, I think you have to take things, some things off the handle, or at least put them in the last spot to get back on the game.
And that is why we were bringing up the IV and AP dual credit. If I slash my IV budget, then I'm going to need less teachers at the high school. I've got more FTE to use, I've got more, it gives, I'm, next, this summer, I'm going to be spending thousands of dollars of training for IV teachers. That's the kind of stuff, by cutting the IV program, I'm actually saving. And that's, that's what we're talking about, is how do we leverage our funds? When we got the IV, we didn't have AP and dual credit. Now we have AP and dual credit, this needs to go, because we're, we don't need to double spend.
So there, to your point, I mean, that is exactly what we're going to have to do, is prioritize where it is. What, what goes on the table when you're looking at that? I think, I would feel pretty confident, I mean, if you guys want to just evaluate, I, I don't think Lori and I might have a problem. I, I think if you're looking at, we're comfortable at 300, the, the step. I, I think, you know, we can have conversations to go to 500. I, I would be, I would say to me, and I am, I, that would not be my recommendation, at least not at that point. Let's, let's see how things unfold.
And you say that makes us 8 or 9, but how does our tax rate compare to those? It's lower than others.
We are significantly, Nixon's is 459, we're 14.
Yeah, so ours is significantly lower.
So at some point, I'm telling you now, if these things come about, you guys are going to have to have a conversation about, do you want to go for a tax increase?
So, I mean, that's to be expected, if we're lower taxed than we pay us, I mean.
And, and of course, obviously, I know, I'm not saying that right now, I know we're in open session, I'm not saying, I think at some point, because to your point, Guy, we, when you talk about revenue, the state at this point has refused to raise the 63.75. They won't even consider it. So that means every year inflation goes up, we go backwards. So we're not making any more state money, and that has not been changed since 2006?
I would say.
And something since 6. And we haven't asked for a tax increase since 2003. I always get those numbers confused. But, so significantly about a time, right? So they're not, we're not getting increases there in the state adequacy target, that's where we get of our ADA, right? Fed, it's 6 to 8% of our budget, which is in the neighborhood of 6 to 7 million a year.
Yeah.
We make off feds, and it's consistent, that doesn't, you know, it pays what it pays for. And then the other is the assessed valuation, what we get from counting taxes on the 414. So really, the only number that we can dramatically impact is that. So you have to think, we just transferred 10 cents, right now at the current number, 10 cents gained us about 700,000. So we would need to go to our taxpayers and have to ask, just to get somewhere in the neighborhood of 2 million, you're looking at adding, asking taxpayers for roughly 40 cents. So that, I'm sorry, yeah, because we're at 414, we would want to go to 454, 40 cents, yes, 40 cents. That would roughly give you 2-ish. Those are very loose now, I don't know, maybe those numbers, I'm just talking in general.
He talks too fast for me when he starts talking.
I have to, I have to. So I have one more thing, and that you can tell me.
No, this, this is why we're, we're having this discussion.
No, I'm not the finance person, I know the financing will have, that might get stuck, like.
Finance is.
The Ford, Ford, no, the Ford.
This is a big one.
For example, a female storm, not female, I'm wrong. A storm shelter, the requirements for those materials and things, those kinds of requirements are a lot more expensive than just a regular kind of building thing. I've been just talking about.
Actually, I, I can talk to that point.
So, but let me finish this for a second. So I, so like, I don't know, those contracts that we already set, nothing can be changed, don't change what type of building is. But I mean, I think there's an example of something that could be done for less money than was originally intended. I know it's argumentated, it's not that I did less money, it's.
It's actually not that less money. So doing pre-caps is cheaper because steel is so high. In order for us to put in the storm shelter windows, right, to have that protection, for all 3 storm shelters to be upgraded in what would be considered from pre-caps to a storm shelter grade is roughly in the neighborhood of $400,000 for all 3 of them total, is what we paid.
So that was my point at the beginning, I'm not the person who has the answers, but I think there are some answers out there, that's one example of some places that money could be trimmed or used or something to help.
Yes, but.
Because our community, they're like, at their, they're just talking about, they're already being, they don't have a lot of extra. There'd be a tax more, or there's.
A lot of times, once again, you talk about the fund and the 10. Us talking about buildings does not impact our ability to give raises to teachers. 2 completely different parts of money. If we want to lock in a raise for teachers through a process, we would go like Nixon did, and say, I want this amount of money, put it in Fund 2, which is the teacher fund, the contract fund. I would want that added there. That's the only way you can get that. Bond money, so in other words, you're saying, oh, well, let's spend this money rather than that. That still wouldn't give you money if you put it in 1. You can't ever spend that money in 1. It can only be in 3 and 4.
The bond.
The bond money.
Transfer right before.
No, you can't, you can't go from 4 to 1.
You can go.
From 1 to 4.
You can go 1 to 4.
Basically, everything works out of 1.
We should lower the cost of things in 4, then we wouldn't have to transfer our 2 million, you know, our, our goal. That would kind of mean that goal a different way, not moving it up to 1.
I think, and I may be wrong, but I think at this point, I mean, I know there are changes that happen with our, you know, I mean, as the final plans get like new buildings, we, we have that there. And the voters approve storm shelters for the schools. And if, you know, that's what the majority of our voters.
I worry.
If we, if we decided to pull that away. Yeah, if we tried to pull that away, we wouldn't, one, we, I don't know about it. We can't, but I, I don't know that we can, I should say, I don't know that we can. But it, it would be, the perception would not be good. You couldn't.
I agree with that. Because what's not, is they already kind of were saying something that was supposed to be a 2 story activity, this building, and now it's a 4 story.
That was called.
So the answer is about that.
Just splitting that you're building.
People are expecting these things to, we, people are expecting their staff, and then we have to give an increase in healthcare. Do we need action for less than that?
I don't, I'm just trying to get a sense. Now, we can go back and run some numbers, we'll have some conversations with MSTA. So my main question is, this is what I worry. I didn't want to go to MSTA and say, look, we're looking at a step and 300. And then I come to this group and they say, we don't like the 17.5, we're not doing a step, we're not doing 300, we're staying pat. And then now I just negotiated. That's why I wanted to talk to this board. It sounds like to me, we have at least a comfort level with what was resented, and at least that gives me a starting point.
Or maybe even 4, I mean, we're only deciding stronger than 4, what's going to 4, exactly.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it would lower it, I mean, you would, I mean, like I said, it's going to change it, so it's going to be point, 17.3-ish. Right, it's not.
But it's also, you have to think of all the costs.
Compound.
I would, um, I think they have some good thoughts, but I would probably be conservative with their suggestions now. And I think they will have a reservation here.
It can be a hard one. Budget estimations do show that FY '25 is going to be another tough year. So I, I, I would be conservative. Let's see what the, the tax thing, maybe, maybe the property tax is going to work out better than I thought. I don't know, we've got to, we've got to see some things. So I would say, let's at least do this. I mean, that is giving something, that is trying to do everything that we can. We're going to monitor how many staff we add. Futuristically though, we're going to have to come back and have a conversation about, what do we do with this new elementary? Reason why I say that is, I know 4 years seems like it's out there a long ways, but it's really not. And if we're trying to play catch-up, and we have to start building a reserve to add 30, 40, 50 teachers to a new building, our Fund 1 can't handle that right now. So when you look at long-range planning, there's some real challenges as we go forward. Once again, we're not broke, we're not, we're not, but we'll have some tough decisions to make going forward. We really love it.
I think the key is, when you talk to that group, you communicate everything. Let them know the increase in healthcare, and then the school should be picking up that 4 and 30,000. I mean, that's part of their salary. I never did like that when I worked at Cracking, paying by the hour, when I first started out. They say, walk back 100, right, compared to other businesses? But look at your benefits. You start adding the total, what are your benefits, when you add it up, well, that's too bad. So they need to realize that we're giving them, and we don't have, we don't have to give us.
We have a very healthy employee plan.
They don't have to give us, we're going to.
It's not good for families, because you pay more, because our deductibles are lower. As Lori and I talked, as we go into next year, the board may have to come back and revisit. Do we present these, this plan? We may have to come back and say, no, we know we have our deductible set at this amount, but we can have less of an increase if we take that deductible to this amount. I mean, I hate to throw that out there. But these are the conversations, to Christina's point, that we got to start prioritizing and having a look at and seeing. So I, I, I would say, let's have a conversation with MSTA, let Lori and I finalize some of these budgets. Maybe we can come back with some stronger numbers. I, I would say, let's have a conversation with MSTA, let Lori and I finalize some of these budgets, maybe we can come back with some stronger numbers.
I think we're meeting on point, period, but we're trying to, is that right? Is that what we said?
Well, we might have a little bit more than, is that okay, are we, am I in line with what you would want me to be?
When are you talking with them?
Uh, we're gonna get that meeting set up, I wanted to be here, I wanted to give up in case something crazy happened here, I wanted to give us a little more planning time, but I, I think we're all on the same page, so I think we'll be.
Before.
Yeah, yeah, and we might be able to have more conversations on the third episode. Thank you for letting me go through all of that and make some adjustments to the agenda today for us to be able to have this conversation.
One thing, from, from my perspective in the banking industry, what we're working at is, we're at the very beginning stages of, of, at potential huge downturn. And that's. There's a lot of macroeconomic stuff worldwide that are going on that could have huge impact on the value of the dollar, and which would have huge impact on inflation going through the group, maybe, you know, the C P O, just because of the Brexit actions. You have China, Russia, Saudi, Iran, South Africa, Brazil, and about twenty-seven nations that are all tinging up saying, we're gonna move away from the US dollar as the reserve currency, and start trading oil on one, which will have huge impact on the US dollar as its valuation. We could be in serious, serious problems as our whole economy could just crumble.
Yeah, we have our, this is our school.
Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah, we, we could be, if our government doesn't pull their head out, we could be looking at total economic catastrophe, do something soon.
I don't even know if there's anything in history, I mean, I've, I've read some of those things, I don't understand it all, but, like, you're looking at the impacts that between all of the European countries having going to the euro and away from it, people pulling out, with value, and, and this is even, this is more catastrophic than that.
Our debt is based on that.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's, it's, you know.
I'm not. I cannot have this discussion without saying, I don't fancy anybody here, but, but I mean, honestly, the, we spend the most money on administrator salaries. And, and maybe that's needed, but maybe there's some room to, they're freezing those, or, I mean, if we're gonna talk about, okay, the classrooms have to be bigger, let's make sure we take a little tiny bit from the ancient place, the classrooms may be a little bit bigger, maybe the administrator salaries a little, because of the teach, or the teacher salaries are, maybe everything has a little bit, and no offense to you guys.
That's not anything.
But I'm like, somebody has to say it, that's, that's our biggest.
There's, there's that technique, oh, no, no, no.
If you're talking salaries, if you're talking salaries.
No, no. We have almost five hundred teachers, we have sixty administrators.
I mean, proportionally, but how much, how much money goes to those sixty administrators?
Absolutely, I mean, if you guys wanna set those things on the table, you're asked, if that's the priority that you wanna go. You have to have good administrators in buildings, our buildings have to operate. Right now, we're in the middle on our administrator salaries, you go to lower those, you'll get those administrators that would be comparable to that level of pay.
And you'll.
So, I'm not arguing against what you're saying, I'm saying, all of those things then have consequences, it's just like raising the number of students in a classroom, have consequences. But I would say, right now, we lost an extremely good administrator to NIXA because her current building has six hundred and fifty kids, she's going to NIXA to do the exact same job for my money for three hundred and seventy-five kids. So we are already struggling there, those would be things that would have to be measured against what you just said.
Well, so everything has to be examined.
Without question, without question, yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you, guys, thank you.
Narn Howard.
I.
Yeah.
Yes.
Catherine.
As we transition.
For the state of Congress, we have to buy down from Excel, uh, first of all, of course, or more, oh, that's why that is, how about, I'm trying to.
Calculator.
I don't know if he, I'm seeing him, he monitored that. He, he had mentioned it to me, so.
Yeah, they, they're probably, have this, they're gonna be informed on this stuff, we'll see, that was just one of those things that.
What, what more, well, and of course, we don't know, you know, all those apartments that are opening up, I mean, good morning, so we don't know the west. Because apartments are, huh.
Yes, like, we're in, we're in there. And we bought, um, and the, and the regional reason we bought, right?
I know, the reason you're saying.
We.
Yeah.
We typically, so we have, we're not like, we're having to walk, we typically, they.
I think that's yours, yes, you gave me that, right, you can add to this price, because of all this stuff, and I'm like, just one more.
You, you and I think of the same way, that I was like, oh, I don't know, it's a good. Surely.
Well, that was somebody, that was.
That was somebody thinking, I mean.
Now, we're gonna have, that's how we're gonna have you here.
Yeah. It's like, you're giving the report.
Yes.
Which is, our, our reality, because, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have two more meetings.
Yeah. It's, yeah, but. But I keep wanting, you know, I'm talking to Dr. Wilson, and she's reading the next intro, then try, maybe we just do it through, you know, our, or change our decision yesterday. To really strike me up, there is, you know, you can't just, you know, so you can have more meetings together, then try to roll through, and you're getting, I got you, in fact, in the student zone, like, this year. Yeah, well, what they did, she, you know, go, there's nothing, we can conversations about them, like, hey, we, we should just, like, one of the. You know, he's like, you're, you're.